...everyone, thank you for coming. Today's date is Monday, July 13th. The time is 7:31. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. If you have anyone, please stand for the pledge. Captain Charles, sir can lead us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Ricketts, call the roll.
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzey.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Calendino.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
All here.
Very good, ma'am. Thank you. Counsel, before you were the minutes presented in your packets for June 9th and June 22nd for our meetings, it would require a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Sakura, supported by Mr. Calendino. Any discussion on the matter? Very good. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First item of business is going to be comments from the public for any one item listed on the agenda. If any person from the public today would like to address counsel on any one item on the agenda, and you are not already on the agenda for that item, you're certainly welcome to speak to counsel and address them at this time. You're on the agenda, ma'am.
Yes.
Well, you actually have a spot on the agenda. So you'll have a chance to speak for your part. Yep. Then if that's, if that...
I can have a spot on the agenda.
Okay. Ms. Pearl. Yep, we would like to have you go ahead and make your way to the podium.
That'll be when?
Right now.
Right now.
Good to go.
It's your turn.
And ma'am, just give us your name and your address, please, and who you represent.
Okay. I'm Jean Pearl Utica Lions, and I sadly now live in Shelby Township, 566-32 Long Island Drive. And I'm here tonight to present two checks from the Utica Lions. We generally do this earlier, but because of the virus, we've had to put it back. So this is the first opportunity we've had to do this. So I need to have someone representing the Utica Library. Is there someone here that I can do that?
Yeah, I'll represent them.
Okay.
So I dismissed Ms. Daigie today for the purposes of keeping the meeting a little bit leaner. Thank you. To keep the meeting a little bit leaner today, and she had no business of her own. So I'll accept this on behalf of the library. Thank you.
Okay. And then I need someone to, from the Utica Parks and Recreation. We're giving them a check for $250.
Mrs. Deion sits on that board.
Thank you. And that's all.
Okay, Ms. Pearl, and there was $750 to the Utica Library?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's a very generous donation. And recently, the Lions received a donation from Utica Business, Five Star Pawn. Do you remember receiving that in? It wasn't nearly around $4,700 something to that effect?
So...
Yeah, so, yeah, Five Star Pawn, look at it, Hall Road gave a sizable donation to Utica Lions. They called up and said they were looking to donate to a local charity, and I couldn't think of one any more fitting at this time than the Utica Lions and all the years of service they've given to the community. So I'd like to again thank Five Star Pawn for their generous donation.
Well, thank you. It was very nice to receive. Also, one thing I want to plug, we are planning on having, the Lions are having, a pancake breakfast on July 26th. That is a Sunday from 8:00 to 12:00. Naturally, a mask will be required, except when you eat, I guess. And this is going to be a free thank you to the community pancake breakfast. International asks us locals to donate something to our community every year, and we do, but this is over and above. So if you can make it, we'd love to have you. They have pancakes and sausage and juice and milks and coffee. So please come. We'd love to have you all come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl.
Where's it gonna be?
Grant Park.
It'll be in the Pavilion.
Grant Park?
Yeah, Pavilion at Grant Park.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. All right, very good. Anyone else like to address counsel on any one other item on the agenda? All right, very good. Thank you, everyone. Unfinished business, I didn't too. There was none. Consent business, none at this time. Correspondence, we did receive correspondence from the Simpson family with a thank you, Carriage House Cooperative with a request for a wall to be placed, a sound barrier wall, and I'll address that in a second. And then Doug Van Toningeren, to the police department, a thank you for their service as well. So in the past, myself and Councilman Calendino have reached out to, or have been reached out to by the folks at Carriage House. We've had some ongoing conversations with them. We've reached out to our state reps and our folks over at MDOT as well to see if a sound barrier wall could be installed behind their residence there. And we've hit a roadblock every single time. We've talked to the top people at MDOT. We've talked to our Senator Pete Lucido, our state rep Diana Farrington. Continuously, the answer's been no. And it's not because they don't like Utica, but simply the funds aren't there. And quite honestly, that highway existed before that development was built, so the funds were never really allocated to that area. I brought up points along M59 where you see $400,000, $500,000 houses that are along M59 west of us here in Rochester, and how those nice homes receive a sound wall just in the last handful of years here, but yet our little neighborhood wasn't worthy of a sound wall. So the fight's not over. It's just, unfortunately, with the challenges COVID, we are masked with our argument for now, but we will get back at it here probably in the fall if things relax. So it's not a done deal. It's just on pause for now. So it's been no so far, but we take that opportunity as just our next opportunity to get in an argument with them and prove our case. So we'll give that another go later. Now, first item of business, Mr. Miklon with the Utica Gasoline Alley car show request. Sir, if you'd make your way to the podium?
Yeah. I came here tonight to ask to have Utica's gasoline alley, but, you know, I talked to the police department, Chief Cody and Fire Chief Wilczek, and they both agree that it's not a good time with everything that's going on with the virus and the things that we're having in the community, not so much our community, that we have the car show. So I am just a volunteer, and I don't want to make that decision. I'm going to leave it up to you guys. If you guys still want to have it, it'll be more than gale to run it. But at this time, my thoughts are with the police department and the fire department. We should pass this here.
Yes, sir. Counsel, discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm 100% with Rick at all the time. I have been a bit leery this year, but at the same time, the car show is always such a great day out there, and it brings so many people. But at this time, we have to worry about being responsible to the public and to the city, because if somebody was to get sick, where do we stand as a consul? Because we had it. And at the same time...
The biggest thing we have to remember is that there's not a lot of car shows.
Right.
And, you know, we're a known event here, and if we have a rush of people, we can't control it. And you can see what's happened. You know, there's no masks, you know? There's no control. Our restaurants are closed. Our downtown is in disarray. I don't think it's a good time. But like I say, I'm a volunteer, so it's up to you guys. If you want me to do it, I'm more than glad to do it. But at this time, I think it's better for the city to pass.
You know, I think you're right, Rick. Also, to the point where we'd be exposing our restaurant patrons and restaurant workers, because obviously those places would use quite often their bathrooms, et cetera, and for obviously food reasons, and maybe probably stress out their staff as well as the capacity levels, and that can be, that can be harmful. So I think as much sad as it is not to have, I think ultimately the responsible thing to do.
Well, I have everything in place to do it, but, you know, the more I look at it and I thought about it, I thought about, I pondered it, you know? I'm not a quitter at all. And if there was any way I thought it could be safe for everybody, but I just, I don't think I could deal with it if somebody got sick.
I'd say that, you know, the gasoline alley is the most successful event that we do. I know you've thrown your heart into it, and I'm sure it's gotten really painful for you to go ahead and say, we probably shouldn't do it.
Really? I don't, I don't want to?
Yeah, right, right.
But I don't think it's a responsible move on our part.
And I really appreciate that, because in more, it's very clear, we don't have a handle on what's going on with the pandemic. We don't have a handle with what's going on with the virus. We don't really understand it. And so caution should be our watchword. So I appreciate that. And it also, I share that frustration, because this, to me, gasoline alley is kind of Utica. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So it's, but this year, no.
I, you had contacted me. I was on the whole, let's go.
Yeah, I got everybody in place, but guess what?
Yeah.
I don't think so, Ken.
My car club is supposed to have one on September 20th, and we're upon, we already had one canceled in May, our first one.
They just, they just, by back to the bricks, just closed this weekend. Frankenwood closed this weekend, you know? And I think it's just time to take a break.
Maybe we, if this all lifts, maybe we can have a late end of October, beginning November something. Who knows?
Yeah.
Whatever, you know?
I think it's...
Car people are itching to get out. If you had it, being that had there had been done, you would have such a success.
Oh, yeah. I realize that, but like I say...
I understand.
It's just, it's just not time. On a lighter note, I wanted to thank the police department and the fire department. We had an issue at the shop. We had one of our employees coded out, and they were, you know, I got a, I got a police jeep in two minutes right there, and three of the best guys from the fire department you could ask for. They did a hell of a job. So I wanted to thank you guys.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you thank them.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Miklon. Counsel, item number six was the Downtown Development Authority Resission Ordinance. Ms. McGraw, do you have any information on that for us?
I mean, I don't have any information, other than council voted to cease operating the DDA at the last meeting, and according to the law, you need an ordinance on it. And so I believe actually Ms. Ricketts put that together, and I've reviewed it, and that would be the action that would need to happen here if council wants to complete that rescission.
Very good. Counsel, has everyone had an opportunity to review the ordinance?
No.
No? All right. Well, Ms. Ricketts would win.
I didn't put it, I didn't put it in the packet.
Okay.
We go get a packet, so I can...
Okay.
It's actually very simple, but, and, all right, go on to the next one.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and, we'll come back to item number six here. Item number seven, Ms. Atkinson, Megan from there on Han Street, reference to gypsy moths.
Hi, Megan from 8827 Han. I've lived in Utica for almost five years, and this is the first year I've been horribly infested with the gypsy moth. And then I have a neighbor here, she has some activity on her house, and then there's another house like one down, and I don't know how far it's gone. I've also seen the caterpillars at Grant Park. So I'm concerned about our trees. I've had the larvae. I've never seen this before. It was crazy. And I still have some of the caterpillars. I don't know if you guys have ever witnessed it, but the larvae, the caterpillars are hideous and also, yeah, like the moss, and they're all over my house. Yeah. So I've had to like broom and spray every day. There's like 20-something on my house, and I mean, they're in the onings, and I'm like, oh. So I've had nightmares. But anyways, my house was hit the worst, and I heard that Shelby Township had like an aerial aviator that came and sprayed. I know my neighbor heard it like early in the morning, so just a couple of streets up, they must have had the same issue, and then they also sprayed with a plane over the houses. So, you know, and right now, it's the end of the season. I'm seeing less caterpillars and activity. But I talked to a professor at MSU Extension, and she said it's just something you could do for next year. So I want to just kind of let you guys know. But it was just the worst. And she goes, they may come back to your house next year and maybe the year after, but they eat the leaves, and they can open up our trees to other diseases. And I don't want to lose our beautiful trees in Utica or at Grant Park. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. And maybe we could do something next year.
Were any of the home remedies that we suggest, that we spoke on the phone, any of the home remedies work?
Some of the soapy water. I mean, we did that kind of like on the porch and stuff. And then I guess you can ban the trees, like you could put tape on the trees and stuff or burlap.
Yep. So they can't, they can't, when they crawl up, they get stuck on it?
Yeah. But it's just hid, I mean, it was just a, and then they make marks on the cement, so you can't get the marks. They're really hard to get off. So, yeah, so just on your radar for next year, we might have a bigger infestation.
Is this something that should be treated this year for next year, or do you have to go through the cycle?
Kind of like next year. The professor said it will start around Memorial Day again. And she goes, you'll probably get it the next year and maybe two more years. And then she said a virus will come by, or like a, something else will kind of stop it from happening. It'll move on. So if you've ever experienced this, it was horrible. I mean, it gave me nightmares. So, but I worry about our trees in Utica. That's what I worry about. I don't want to lose our beautiful, mature trees. That's what makes, part of what makes Utica beautiful. So, yeah, so it's just something on the radar for next year.
It seems to me, I remember when I was young, all the city sprayed every year for gypsy moths. Every year.
In Utica?
They had a machine that went down the street and just swept all the trees.
Yeah.
Like a big fan, and it just blew it all over them.
Yeah.
That I remember when I was a kid.
Over by neighbor, I did not have the gypsy moths, but this is the first year we were infested with carpenter moths.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, it's a very odd year. We have never had them. Every one of my neighbors had them.
Yeah.
In their house, around the house.
Right.
So we all did the same treatments around, and I don't know if they run their course, but I feel for you.
They do. Yeah. Just one other thought, like the aerial applicators, we probably have to get a private company, but you could do a cost share program. I mean, I don't know if the city would have to pick up some of that and some of the private homeowners. So I just want to throw that out there. And again, next May around Memorial Day is when it's going to happen again. So they went from Shelby to Utica, so now they're in Utica. So I just want to let you guys know that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll digress back to item number six, which is the Downtown Development Authority Resission Ordinance. I do have the ordinance before me. I will read it. It's ordinance number 124-A. Orders to rescind the ordinance number 124 in the state of Michigan County, McComb City of Utica, July 13th, 2020. An ordinance is, to rescind an ordinance adopted August 21st, 1989, whereas the City Council of Utica on August 21st, 1989 passed an ordinance which created pursuant to Act, Public Act Number 197 of 1975, a downtown development authority for the city has published said ordinance. Whereas the state law calls for this to be done by ordinance, and whereas the City Council of Utica has adopted an ordinance to create and operate a downtown development authority and duly published said ordinance. Therefore, be it ordained that the ordinance of August 21st, 1989 is hereby rescinded, and the ordinance of July 13th, 2020 is reconfirmed by all acts done, performed or authorized under said ordinance are hereby approved, confirmed, ratified, and adopted. And this was a roll call vote. I'm sorry, this is for us, correct, Ms. Ricketts?
Yeah.
That's for your, that's for your purposes.
Yeah, that's for us.
Thank you. Okay, so that will be the end of the reading. Counsel, it would require a motion to adopt this ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Sakura, I move the motion.
Moved by Mr. Sakura.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Calendino. Discussion on the issue, gentlemen, lady? Mr. Cunningham, sir?
Does this mean automatically now we are deleting the DDA?
It's effective today, or, I'm sorry, July 13th.
Recording and final. So it's effective on final publication. With the COVID, I prefer it goes in the paper. I think their next publication date is next week.
Okay.
Because otherwise, they just do it online. They're only doing it every other week, CND News.
Okay.
So whatever date that they go, they publish.
So this, this will mean this is a final, it's done?
This, this will be the last time we have a discussion. Reference it.
So we have to vote on it?
Yes. Yes, sir. Okay. So we do have a motion. We have a second. It's been discussed. Ms. Ricketts, we'll take the roll.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
Cunningham.
No.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Miklon, you had a question, sir?
Well, I've been a part of the DDA, and losing the money, you know, as a mechanic, sometimes you did use that tool, and you put it in a box, and maybe you were going to throw it away. But guess what? Every time I threw something away, it's when I needed the worst. I think by not having the DDA, you're losing an opportunity for funding for the state. Yes, it's changed a little bit, okay? And you're also losing a lot of things that happen downtown. You're looking, you're looking very narrow at the little bit of money you're going to get right now. When we, if we all got together and worked as a team, both the city council and the DDA, you know, we really need development downtown. Look at our downtown right now, and you're getting rid of our DDA.
Understood, sir. I apologize. I know you're passionate about it, and I...
I'm passionate. I'm just saying, hey, this is the tool we have. We get money from the state, and we're letting it go.
Okay.
A little bit of funding.
The money is not from the state. The money is funds that we captured from our own tax dollars.
Yeah, the state gives us money.
No, no, not at all.
They, they...
We captured funds from some of the school districts and the other taxing jurisdictions, but the state gave us nothing in return.
And that's probably, that's probably the reason, that's probably the reason why it has to be dissolved, unfortunately, because we're going to see a lack of state revenue sharing this year, that we're going to have to adopt a negative budget. And instead of working in a negative, the DDA gathers around $350,000 a year. $260,000 of those dollars will come right to the city. The other, the remainder goes back to the taxing jurisdictions. So that $260,000 is going to be put to work. Although we don't have a DDA, what we do have in place that we're developing right now is a capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is going to be able to do things that the DDA can also have mission on, like street improvement and entertainment and music in the park and things like that. The capital improvement plan has money set aside, and our budget for that is actually put, those portions of the DDA dollars are put into our budget this year for 2021. So we do have some of those elements in there. So as part of our capital improvement plan, we're going to have money pushed into a certain account to do street improvements, to do street lights, and do all these other things. The DDA was a little whimsical in what they wanted to do, when they wanted to do it. But now, council has a mission, and it's going to be directed by the capital improvement plan. So there is going to be...
They have an avenue.
There's still going to be forward momentum to bring, do those nice things that the DDA did.
The downtown, along with the other areas of the downtown. Again, people forget Van Dyke.
It's not just the downtown. It's the whole.
Well, but the DDA area is also Van Dyke, is also Hall Road, the other side of Van Dyke. But during this whole process, we were not abandoning the programs that were there. Are we going to capitalize, or are we not going to capture those funds from the other districts? Yes. Part of the other situation is with the new development that we are getting. We're getting a million dollar plus car wash, the retail pot establishments. All of those tax dollars would not have really benefited the city, except for what those parcels were worth in 1989. So there is no moving the city forward with any of that. Those were all DDA areas, so all of that would have come back in. So our hands are tied over and over. So with that coming back in, we're still going to look at what we did with lighting, what we did with some of the social gatherings, okay?
But now we can use all those dollars throughout the whole city.
Yes.
Not just a segmented area. So the whole city can benefit from it. Yeah, we do lose a couple of dollars, but as a whole, one that made us solvent, you know, because we were looking at a negative and a deficit in the budget. It was a hard pill to swallow. I'd been, I was not for it. I'm still kind of against it. I like the DDA. But what I like and what's proper aren't always, you know, necessarily in line with what's best for the city.
I don't care what avenue you use, as long as there's an avenue to you.
And that's our capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Yep. That's the route we're on. You'll, you'll be pleased with that, I think. So... Okay, thank you, Mr. Miklon. Okay, folks, we're going to drive on. We don't typically take too much time out of the agenda for side questions, but it is an important item. New business from the mayor's office. I'd like to recognize our police officers and firefighters for the work they've done at Mr. Miklon's store. And also, we had electrocution that took place of a young couple, some 18, 19-year-old kids over on the east side of the city. They were hurt very badly through electrocution by accident, and our police officers responded. They were able to take everyone to the hospital in time and manner. I understand that the couple were hurt very badly with life-threatening injuries, and they are in the hospital. Last I heard, they are on the mend. I don't know all the details, but I'd like to thank our firefighters and our police officers for their excellent work and praying for our residents, that their safety is in God's hands, and hopefully He takes care of them. Also, folks, what I'd like to do is put this food to thought here. I'd like to have a dedication for Pioneer Park either in August or September, or actually formally dedicate the park, and maybe even do a council meeting at the park one of those nights as an opening celebration for the park. So that'll be in August or September. I'd like to do that. Also, as well, I had an opportunity to speak with Dana from General Sports. She's asking that council will consider allowing them not to pay the fee for the locker room usage and the DPW parking lot this year, because they have no utility for it this year. She expresses that they are having trouble paying some of their employees. They've not put anyone on furlough as of yet. They are operating with 100 people in the stadium at any one time during games, which includes the staff and ballplayers. So they are asking, because they are not using those areas, that we would consider allowing them to not have to pay this season. So that is for your consideration, the council. Mr....
When you say they're not using it, they will not be using grounds, lock the gate at DPW, and...
That's correct.
That's it.
They will not be using those areas.
That is impossible.
How so?
Because that's where they keep their mowers and stuff.
That's part, that's part of the lease agreement. That's, that's above and beyond. We're talking about parks.
That's how you get in there.
But they have access, that's not true. They have access through their back gate. Their back gate opens like this, right through that yard, right through their, the water plant.
Does it?
Yep. 100%.
I saw that gate.
Yes, sir. There's a dual gate that they bring their lawn mowers through and whatnot. So they are not parking in DPW parking lot for their VIP, and they are not using the locker rooms at DPW for their, their umpire staff. So she is requesting that we would consider that and take this in consideration. They are claiming that they are not laying off any employees. They could use a little leniency this particular year.
What is that, about $5,000?
$4,500 if I'm not mistaken.
Forty, $4,000, $4,100, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah.
As long as, and I don't want to be a Grinch, but as long as that property is not used at all, the gate's locked, and there's no access for them, they can get their mowers down at the other end and do that.
Yep.
Then I have no problems with it. But the minute it gets opened up and they want to use it, it's the full amount.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on it? Counsel?
I agree with that.
It'd be nice to review the contract.
Yeah.
Before we vote on this.
Yeah, I don't think we should vote.
Do we actually have a contract with them for that, for the usage of those areas?
We do.
Okay. If, if Ms. McGraw and I are able to come to an agreement that it is as stated as I'm presenting it, if at all possible, would council see to that, that I could go ahead and authorize that deal with them after the fact? Is that acceptable? If Ms. McGraw finds it as not appropriate, then we would bring it back to council for another, another visit.
As a question, if we suspend the agreement for this year, so they can save the money, does that give us the ability to make the contract null and void and we start from scratch? If they want some consideration, what is the consideration given us?
If you're letting them out of their contractual obligation, I mean, you're giving them a concession, and if you want to negotiate something different because of that, you certainly could.
I would like if we come down to that, that if we're given this concession, because we put the money in the budget, okay? It was already there, okay? Then this just opens up the agreement. We gave the concession. Everything else is null and void. We renegotiate from this point forward on that idea.
And was this, without seeing the contract, I can't verify this, but was it like a period of time, like for the next five years?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but I do recall it was for a period of time, an annual fee to pay.
So would this add a year to the end of that time?
If council would be so inclined, we could, I mean, you could postpone this a month, but also give them a delay in their requirement to pay until it comes back before us.
Well, you know, I would think, I would think that there's, there's no hurry here. The ballpark's not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere. Why don't we do our homework? We'll come back and visit this in August. Okay, we'll put it out there as food for thought. Okay, we'll do a little homework. We'll have a good answer for you come August.
And then it can be in the next month's packets, so we can review it.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, we'll do that. Mr. Cunningham?
Is there anything to stop them, that, any of the other monies that we collect from them?
No. So the parcel seed, which they purchased, and they have an agreement to provide us with a certain amount of dollars per year on that parcel as a would-be tax, that's still going to be in place, because that has nothing to do with the ballpark. That's a separate venture altogether.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about them asking for anything else?
That would be my, that would be my assumption.
But as of this point forward, until we meet again, there's no use of the umpire room for the parking?
Yes, they were, they were certain of that, too. They have no intentions of using They have no intentions of using it. So, okay, very good, we'll revisit that idea in August. Next would be, I was in contact with the folks at the locker room saloon. They are making efforts not to close their doors, as other businesses are still struggling not to close. And they're, they were in the conversation with the DDA about a facade improvement grant. I can't recall what stage that they were, if they had actually submitted paperwork to request the grant or not, but I know we did talk about council at one point, looking into being able to continue some of the work that the DDA did. Would that be, would that be anything that council would consider as continuing the, anything that was already in motion from the DDA honoring that, honoring that work?
I would be in favor of if we were operating under the $5,000 match for outside.
Facade improvements.
Facade improvements, that's what Mr. McElhan had said, you know? We need to make the downtown look nicer. So if we can spend up to $5,000 and they match it, I think it's in our best interest. That's part of the problem is, nobody wants to take the money. Nobody wants to invest their share.
It was like, just like, I was waiting for the rest of them, you know, for a while, because I wanted to redo the front of my building.
We're going to get.
Well, that was not going to make a break.
But my idea is that I think.
Just sell one of those gas pumps, you could refinance the house.
I think we issued four facade improvement grants last year.
Yeah, and the facade improvement grant does work well. If you look, I mean, look at the barber shop, it looks a million times better. And we look at across the street at the apartments, they look much better than they did before. So there is some proof positive that it works. So anyways.
The problem is, we didn't budget for a facade improvement program. So we've given Jimmy, we're talking about giving Jimmy John's $5,000. Now we're talking about a facade improvement program that's not in the budget. So already we're $10,000 into our surplus, so we got to keep that in mind.
Yeah, understood. And all I'm trying to do is, we basically feel like we sold a house, we were given some warranty that we are still going to fix the plumbing, you know, after we left. So there's still a couple loose ends that the DDA has to tidy up before all business is done. And if those folks were kind of given the idea, yes, we're going to approve this for you, yes, we're going to make it happen, it's still an element of the city, still a branch of the city government, and now all of a sudden the city's saying, sorry, we're not here anymore. They've been told by the city of Utica to some degree that we're going to assist you in this effort. I think it'd be good for us to keep our word as good business partners to our Utica business partners to do as they've been, you know, informed that we would do.
We do have to be careful, though, about setting precedent, because I know other business owners that never got the paperwork submitted, but had talked to the DDA, right? So the locker room did not submit paperwork. If they would have submitted paperwork, Shamrock submitted paperwork. And the city is honoring the agreement that the DDA made to the locker room, or to Shamrock. The locker room did not submit paperwork. I know another local business guy that just bought a building and was talking about a facade improvement program. Do we give him a facade improvement grant as well?
No, I would agree that only if paperwork had been submitted and it's already in the process. If it's in the process through the DDA, I think the city should honor those.
Well, I don't believe locker rooms submitted paperwork, though.
If that's the case.
If that's the case, then they're saying that it's.
They may be on a lot. Yeah, I agree, I agree 100%. If they did file paperwork, if we're mistaken they did, I would say that we honor them. If they are, if they've not, and they shuffled their feet for too long, unfortunately, the opportunity, that window may have closed. So I would agree with that. Okay. Thank you. So I believe that's all I have from the mayor's office. Counsel, any reports?
Mayor, I had one item.
Yes, sir.
We had a resident that emailed you and I a few months ago. Their family was having difficult time. The husband had had surgery, open-heart surgery. They were at risk of losing their house and their water bill was pretty far in the rears and they were facing a shut-off. We had a local business person come forward and offered to pay their entire backwater bill. And I'm happy to say he stepped in. That's Kevin Abdallah.
Mr. Abdallah, can you go to the podium for us? I know you're shy.
Yes, I am.
But I don't mind putting you up there. So Kevin Abdallah, very good friend of Utica as of late, last couple of years, he's been kind of trying to do some work with the city and he's working out apparently for his company. He's now going to be one of the retailers along Van Dyke, a new store coming in before too long on the west side of Hall Road, I'm sorry, the west side of Van Dyke, south of Hall Road. So thank you again for your generosity, and that's the second time Mr. Abdallah has stepped up. He tried to be very generous one time, I tried to shut him down in a meeting, and he was adamant about paying another water bill. And so thank you for your generosity and taking care of our residents.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. How much, are you in liberty to say it is public record, the water bill?
Oh, yeah. $1,669.
Wow.
Thank you so much. And if you were, guys, to be quite honest, you know, sometimes we like to support those that support us, and I'll be honest, Mr. Abdallah makes an amazing taco over Juan Miguel's restaurant. His food is really good. He's a proprietor of that business right there on Hall Road, just past, well, just before CJ Berrymore's, and they do a great job. So if you are inclined to drive down Hall Road and look for a really good dining experience, he does an amazing job. I've been going there for 10, 15, how long have you guys been open?
12 years.
Okay, yeah, I've been going there for about 12 years, I remember when you guys opened. So really great spot, so thank you. And I know I've given back a couple of times, heading over there for lunch, and it's always been amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further counsel reports, counsel persons? Okay, moving on, planners are not here tonight, they had nothing to present. The assessor had nothing to present tonight. The building department had nothing to present. However, Mr. Hicks, our code enforcement ordinance officer is out in the neighborhoods. He is thinking about you, we're asking that you think about him, too. He might leave you a love note on your property if you're not mowing your lawn properly or maintaining your yard. It is right in the middle of summer and it is appropriate that we ask that you maintain your yard and maintain your home in a quality manner to keep property values where they belong in the city. So we appreciate everyone doing that. Ms. Daigie was excused tonight, but she is going to be very excited about this, Ms. Poet, the $750 to the library. They'll be very pleased about that, I'm sure. So that's very generous again. Chief Willsec had presented tonight. Again, I did ask him not to come for the social distancing purposes, but he did allow us to know that firefighter Jaco Beany is resigning from the fire department. Not that he doesn't like us, but he is actually doing the good side, he's becoming a police officer. So he has resigned his position and he's joining the police academy, so wishing him much luck and success in the police academy. Also, Chief Willsec is requesting a 911 radio purchase request. The last storms, it happened, I believe, on Friday, maybe? Yeah, I believe it's Friday. They had an electrical storm and their building or areas of the antenna were hit by a lightning bolt, and it damaged their radio system. It appears at this time to be an insurable item that we're going to consider, we're looking at making a claim at this point. Mr. Ricketts, do you have information, reference the purchase of the radios?
The only information I have is Brian did stop in and say, originally about $7,500. Phil told me the chief called and said they might be looking at 20 grand. So I'm looking for a request to purchase replaced cost not to exceed $20,000 for a fire department radio. They're operating temporary, they had to bring in guys on standby because the radios are not working. As far as I know, it should be insurance covered. We have to have the radio, I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, and what this radio does is it allows them to have their paging system. We had radio technicians in, we were able to part this together, it was a temporary patch. It was put in a Band-Aid on an arterial wound, if you will, but they cannot operate effectively without their pager radios that they have. They carry on their hips pagers. A button is hit and the pager sends off a sound, let the firefighters know that there's an emergency, and that's how they respond. They then, dispatch has one way of doing it, but they need that system also inside the fire department. It's not a backup system, it's a standalone system that is required, is barely operating at this point, and would be required to have a new one in order to have effective fire coverage. So it would require a motion to authorize Chief Willsec to engage and solicit offers up to $20,000.
Do we have money in the fire equipment? What do we budget? I think it was $8,000 this year? Phil?
Phil? It should be, we should recoup the 20 grand from the insurance company, though. I don't see them.
They just got the information, they called today, Chief Willsec was not available to give them.
Yeah, they're still working on it.
So.
I would say we suspend buying the scuba gear, whatever that was, until we figure this out, because that was, wasn't that eight grand?
Was it eight or 10?
Yeah, sure, and there's no hurry for that gear. However, I think that's probably an easy decision to make at this point, a reasonable, but also it is insurable, it appears to be an insurable item, so I think that.
And if we get reimbursed, we go back.
Yeah, okay. Let's not work on making a budget amendment just yet, I would think, I think that's probably hasty. Why don't we consider authorizing a $20,000, subject to it being insurance, an insurance reimbursable item? And if at that point we find out it's not, we can hold a special council session to make the purchase. Is that agreeable?
It's moved.
It's moved by Socora.
Support.
Supported by Calendrino. Any further discussion on the matter? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries mail up to $20,000, subject to insurable reimbursement. Very good. Chief Cody had nothing to offer tonight, but he did pass along something to me. I have made a deal with the police officers individually, that if they catch speeders going over 100 miles per hour on Hall Road, they will get a free lunch. I am sad and proud to say at the same time, I will be buying seven lunches the next couple of days.
I hear it every night.
Yeah, I do, too. So they are working very hard on Hall Road, because people get the red light on Hall Road, they stop, they rev up their engines, they get green, and they think it is the autobahn westbound. And so I hear them, you hear them, I mean, I think most everyone can hear them. And so the chief is working hard to make sure those guys are writing tickets. They had one guy at 107 miles per hour every night. And they've had quite a few of them, and they caught another one on Cass doing 65 the other day.
On Cass?
On Cass, yeah, right by the Fisherman's Net Church.
Oh, man.
So they are receiving lots of accolades from my office and free lunches, so that's okay. I don't mind doing it. And yes, that's paycheck, because I don't have a mayor credit card that goes out and buys lunches.
So where are you buying the lunch at?
Secret location, you're not invited.
I got a place like this, yes.
Got him. All right, good. So Juan Miguel's, I mean, that's where we're going. All right. DPW superintendent Bill Lang offered something to Ms. Ricketts today. So Ms. Ricketts, you have something, you want to do that under the treasurers, I'm sorry, under the admin?
Yeah, I put it under me, because I knew Bill wasn't going to be.
So I have Mr. Ling working on a few things. Our dog park is one of them, over at Pioneer Park. He is developing the signage that's going to be at the base of the hill as you go down the hill. Has anyone not been to the dog park yet? It's looking quite nice, they've been watering it, the contractor's been watering it, and there is a meter on it, so they are being responsible for the build that comes from the fire hydrant. They will be, hopefully, we could open that up as soon as maybe we get a first cut or two on the lawn to see how it's looking, because otherwise it will turn into a dust bowl, we don't want that to happen. So he is getting the sign prepared, we're actually using a used sign that we used to set out from the DPW, has been replaced through the Joe Francis sign, that's the one that was replaced. We're taking the old sign and refitting it for the dog park purposes. So it's been used. And that's all I have for the DPW standpoint, other than they have been out painting lines for the public parking places in the city, throughout the city. And just recently, they've been doing the handicap tomorrow and whatnot, they'll be doing other painting locations, subject to the remaining paint they have. I know they're going to order more paint. Okay, at this time, Mr. Patanester from the treasurer's office, sir.
Mayor and council, there are three items on the agenda, and I would like to also address two other items if you would permit me to do so. First item is the Munetrix Level 3 license renewal. This is a license that enables us to comply with Public Act 252 of the state of Michigan that requires us to provide certain financial data to the public through an online dashboard and a citizen's guide. The Munetrix has held the cost of this license the same as last year at $2,737.85 to be paid from the treasurer's software support account number 101253731010. The license would be effective September 1, 2020.
So, and Mr. Patanester, again, the renewal fee? Okay, counsel, any questions for Mr. Patanester, reference the Munetrix Level 3 license renewal?
I'll make a motion to enter into the renewal agreement with Munetrix for the amount stated.
It's been moved by Mr. Socora, supported by Mr. Sylvester. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? If not, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries, Mr. Patanester.
Thank you. Second item is an informational item primarily. The Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain District is planning to issue Series 2020A bonds this August to finance the rehabilitation of the North Interceptor East Arm and the Northeast Sewer Pump Station. The city of Utica participates in the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain District, more commonly known as OMID. If you're familiar with the fixture that's in the parking lot on the east side of Utica Road across from St. Lawrence, that is where the city of Utica's effluent, sanitary effluent flows into the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain, and it's where McComb County meters are effluent. As a participating municipality, we are responsible for a share of any debt that is issued by OMID or the McComb County Wastewater District. OMID is offering us the opportunity to pay upfront the project cost. Unfortunately, we're not sitting on $917,000 and change in our sewer and water fund.
Oh, really?
So it would be necessary for us instead to notify OMID that we will participate in the bond issue, which would, first year of the bond would be 2021, and it would mature in 2041. So I'm asking for a motion to notify OMID that we will participate in the bond issue.
So Kevin, you'll help on this one, too? All right? It's a lot of tacos.
I'll make a motion to enter into that agreement.
Support.
It's been moved by Calendrino, supported by.
Nope.
I'm sorry, it's been moved by Socora, supported by Calendrino. Counsel, any discussion on the matter?
I have a discussion. I was looking at the repayment, and this is what our repayment is, it's $7,880 the very first year, but then after that, it jumps to $42,000, and then five years later up to 61. So, you know, it really is, it's going to really affect our budget, and we're going to have to really tighten up our belts just to pay this bond.
So this is paid out of the water and sewer fund? So what it means is that sewer rates will have to be increased accordingly.
Yeah, so that's, it's a big hit, but it's not so bad, you want it spread out?
I do have a question. The water and sewer increase, the money that's going back into the water and sewer fund, I thought about this today, would that cover this bond repayment? The money that we're going to be putting back into the sewer account every year, or no?
I'm not sure what you mean by putting money back into the sewer and water.
We're repaying the sewer account.
No, we're repaying, the sewer and water fund is repaying the general fund.
Yeah, at some point, though, I think if I'm understanding this correctly, I think your question might be, at some point, we're going to be finished paying off the deficit to the sewer and water fund. Is it possible or plausible that what, the difference that we see that we will be having paid off, can that difference then go towards the bond?
Thank you.
Certainly. The sewer and water, whenever the sewer and water fund has a debt that matures, then that reduces the amount that we have to charge to the customers. The debt you're speaking of has a 10-year timeframe, this one has a 20-year timeframe. So by the time that one is being, the one debt you're referencing is paid off, that will help to continue paying this. Now, I understand that OMID plans on issuing another one next year, and McComb County Wastewater District is in the works of issuing another one next year as well.
Great.
So unfortunately, that's the price that we have to pay for the fact that the OMID and McComb County Drains, which used to belong to the city of Detroit, were not adequately maintained. Oakland-McComb Interceptor District and McComb County Wastewater Districts purchased the systems from Detroit that run through Oakland and McComb, so that, because they could get, they could issue bonds at a lower rate. In this case, there is an expectation from OMID that maintenance costs, which are passed on by Great Lakes Water Authority as operating costs in the consumption rates, will be reduced and offset the increase in the debt service. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, the council is the Oakland County McComb Interceptor District. Are all the communities gonna be participating in that bond, or just the City of Utica?
All municipalities that are on the OMID. So there's a bunch of communities in Oakland County and a number of them in McComb. They all participate. Now, some of them may have enough cash sitting around to pay upfront their portion, which reduces the debt.
My question is, I just wanna make sure that Utica goes above the 40% of the bill.
No, absolutely not. Our portion of the bill is like 2% of the total bill.
Yeah, is it 2%, is that small?
It's that small.
Yeah, okay.
That is small.
I'm sorry. What was that portion when it came time to the 15-hour work class? Were we like around 11%? Do you remember that?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Question, when it's calculated, because we have Great Lakes Water Authority, City of Detroit, City of Detroit today is being sued by the ACLU and NWAACP, because water is supposed to be a God-given right to the residents, so they don't want people to have to pay for it. Detroit has gone in and frozen the water rates. They're actually going and announced and repairing people's plumbing at no charge. Does that all affect the rates that we then get calculated for the water and sewer under the Great Lakes Water Authority rate? Because Detroit is part of that, or are they, those extras coming out of their pocket and we're not footing bill for the free water and the improvements to progress?
Now, I'm not an expert on the Great Lakes Water Authority arrangement, but I understand that Detroit, while it does get some subsidies from Great Lakes Water Authority, is really treated as a wholesale customer of Great Lakes Water Authority, just as we are, although they do get some, they do get some preferential treatment. The Great Lakes took over the mains that are transporting water through Detroit to the other suburbs, but Detroit owns its own, just like we own our water system here. Anything in Detroit that is off of those primary mains that are transporting water through the city to the suburbs still belongs to Detroit, and they're responsible for them.
Yeah, to help answer your question, if I recall correctly, there's five members that sit on the board, one from McComb, one from Oakland, one from Wayne County, and two from Detroit.
And one from the state.
The five that they sit through the tri-county area. Now, the state's in, the state's involved. But again, the majority is in Detroit and Wayne County, not McComb or Oakland County. You only get one vote. So if they decide to raise rates, or answer your question, this councilor, you know, who could be tied into a lawsuit?
Well, last year, they announced that there was an excess of $75 million, okay? They gave the majority of it to the City of Detroit, and then they gave the rest of it to the City of Flint, which is not on their water system at the time, okay? So they used your tax dollars and your funds to subsidize other people that honestly had no business with it. And that's my concern, is this something that we have to look into? If Detroit wants to say, we're buying the water and we're gonna subsidize it and pay extra for what we're doing, that's great. But I don't wanna find out that all of a sudden, they're doing all of this, and guess what? That's off the top, and now we set the rates for everybody else, when everybody else has been picking up the tab. Because it sounds really, really good, but guess what? We have people that need help, too. And that's up to us if we help them or not, or the very gracious contributors that help people. So that was, I'll try to look to see what I can do. I just didn't know if you knew. I get newsletters, but they're very vague on all of that type of funding information.
Perhaps we can draft the letter as a caution, thanking them for the cautionary tale that if we had only managed funds better, we would of course have $917,000 in excess lying around.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster. Sir, do you have a third item? Item C, the MERS Actuarial Valuation Report.
So the, I believe the MERS Actuarial Valuation Report, as of December 31, 19, was forwarded to you via email. Just real quickly, a summary of it, the purpose of the valuation is to measure funding progress, to establish contribution requirements specifically for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, that's next fiscal year, not this one, and provide actuarial information in connection with applicable governmental accounting standards for its statements. The City of Utica MERS pension system consists of four divisions, two of which are closed and two are open. The open divisions are the General and AFSMI Division 11 and the Police Dispatchers Division 2. For this valuation, beginning July 1, 2021, the employer contribution for the dispatch unit will be 11.44% of payroll, and the AFSMI general unit will be 2.73% of payroll. By comparison, the contribution rates for fiscal year, excuse me, fiscal year 2020 are 14.03% and 2.67%. So dispatch is going down, and general AFSMI going up slightly. The two closed divisions are the General Division Number One and AFSMI Division Number 10. These two divisions, because they're closed, the contribution is calculated as a fixed amount rather than a percent of payroll. For fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, the general unit will be billed $5,740 a month, and the AFSMI unit $10,067. By comparison, the current year, general is being billed $6,788 a month, so our rate will go down next year. But the AFSMI unit is being billed $8,769, and it will be going up to $10,067. Beth and I normally meet with the, I mean, with the MERS rep. We have not yet scheduled a meeting. I'm sure it will be a virtual meeting this time, because they have put a prohibition on any in-person meetings. So we haven't sat down to discuss what generated these changes. I'm just bringing them forward to you, so you're aware of them. Finally, the funded ratio did increase slightly from 62% to 64%, which was in our favor. But again, this was, this valuation was as of December 31, prior to COVID.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster. From the administration, I'm sorry, anyone have any questions for Mr. Pat Oster before we move on?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Just the three items, sir, you all said?
So I had two other items I wanted to discuss.
Thank you.
First one is the legislature passed Public Act 231, I think it was, no, 123, a couple of weeks ago, creating some funding programs for municipalities. One is a Water Utility Assistance Program that's being handled through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This would make eligible, this would make available to residents who are SNAP eligible, so on what we used to call food stamps, a subsidy to help pay for outstanding arrears in their water utility, particularly those who are, at that economic status, they're probably struggling right now to pay their water bills. There is a $700 per residential account cap. The intent is to prevent these people from having their water shut off or sent to tax collection. But it only, again, it only applies to those who are SNAP eligible. The program does require, though, that the City of Utica opt in if we want our residents to be able to participate in the program. So that would require a motion of council to opt in. Again, it's being handled through the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm not sure how it's going to be administered. The webinar that Councilman Calendino and I attended last week gave some information, but left me, I think, more confused than anything with how it's gonna be handled. So I would ask for council's motion to opt in if that's what council decides.
Do we have any sense of what percentage of our population would match?
I have no idea. None whatsoever.
Is there any award funds the City of Utica would have to put forward? Is there a match? Is there a grant? Is there, is this all?
No.
It's all CARES. It's all CARES.
And the way I understand it is the state would actually pay us once the individuals had applied, and then we would notify them that their account had been, that a payment had been made on their account.
Would they pay us directly, or just kind of put it on like the deficit of what they owe us for the revenue share?
No, they would, they would pay us directly.
Interesting.
Which will still take about 14 years.
And the money would be specific to the account, to that customer's account.
Okay, oh, okay.
Okay. Second item was the First Responders Hazard Pay Premiums Program. This program would reimburse the city up to $1,000 per employee classified as public safety or public health. The program is on a first-come, first-served basis, so I prepared this grant application last week, and Mayor Dion affixed the necessary signatures, and it was emailed up to the state treasury last week, I believe on Friday. We're looking at, if approved, a sum of $47,000. Now, this will require that the council authorize a hazard premium, pay premium, because none of our collective bargaining agreements authorize such a premium payment, whether it's done at tonight's meeting or next month's meeting, I don't know.
It's not just a reimbursement either. It's an actual grant. The state has money from the CARES Act, and it's come to the state. It's on a first-come, first-served. Somebody's getting this money, whether it's our employees or another municipality's employees. You know, the state will authorize it, and then, you know, council would need to, either at this meeting or at a future meeting, vote to approve the acceptance of that money if it is awarded, and then paid out to the employees.
So even though this is grant monies, and even though it is with, you know, by any reasonable person's understanding, occurring due to very unusual circumstances, should we go ahead and take the step of authorizing hazard pay in order to receive the funds? In the future, does that create any constraints, any problems, any precedents that we get beat up on in future negotiations?
I would just do a motion to approve the application, and if awarded, to receive those funds and pay in accordance with the award.
Do we have to create a time period for this hazard pay? Because I'm in, I'm in concurrence with Councilman Sylvester that if we create hazard pay, is this something now that becomes on the next contract, and the next contract, and then?
To the contrary, I actually think that this would help with future contract negotiations, because if the city does not offer to take this money and give it to its employees, I would see employees taking a much harder stance in future negotiations, because there is absolutely no financial obligation to the city to participate in that. This is a CARES Act COVID-related only. It's federal money. It's coming from the federal system to the state system, and hopefully to our employees through us. And it would have no impact on any future obligations of the city to authorize or do that.
Phil, did you happen to go to the webinar today, this afternoon? Because I wasn't able to either. The dates were tricky. Phil, help me out if I'm getting them wrong. I think the payout was in October or November, but the deadline to submit was in September. And the guy that was the presenter did say it's a reimbursement, when he was, because that question came up on the, it was an MML, Michigan Municipal League webinar, and it came up, and the presenter said this is a reimbursement.
So there's two parts to the CARES Act, and I didn't participate, so I didn't know. The other part is an actual reimbursement of payroll costs, two months of payroll costs, that the city has incurred through its police department and fire department.
Right.
So that will be a reimbursement. We've already paid that. We've already incurred that payroll liability, and it's been paid out. So that one strictly is a reimbursement. The hazard pay is, for some municipalities, is a reimbursement, because some municipalities did give their employees hazard pay. Other municipalities did not, and so it's a grant for them.
So if I might add to that, because what Councilman Calendino was getting at was that the, there are some dates here that get a little confusing. The city, in order to be paid this hazard premium from the state, has to have paid its employees by September 30, okay? And we won't get reimbursed until November. However, with any of these federal, and this is a federal program that's just being administered by the state, the state will take our application, which they received on Friday. I got notification, confirmation that they received it. They will take our application. They will review it, and if they approve it, they will contact us to enter into an agreement, which is how they do all of these federal grant programs that I've ever seen. And that's what they spoke about last Friday, or Thursday, at the webinar. So we would get an agreement, and that agreement will then guarantee us that we will get the funds that we have applied for, as long as we make the payment to our employees by September 30. So in the application, I stated that we would pay our employees on September 30. That gave us the most amount of time. If they don't approve our application, we don't make the payment. They will have processed our application and approached us either with an agreement or a denial before September 30. I am confident of that.
I have a question. You know, I was reading this today, and it said that there was, you know, that the maximum amount was $100,000. Was that $100,000 per community, or $100,000 that they were giving out totally? I mean, that was in more than one spot. Did you see it, Gus? You know, I kept looking at this, $100,000, $100,000.
This is a $1,000 per public safety employee.
Okay.
Now, I believe there is a cap per municipality.
Yeah, we won't.
We don't come anywhere near that cap.
That might have been, that might have been what.
It's for the $100,000.
And they first-come, first-served basis, so they're going to run out of money.
So they might.
Before they've approved every application, presumably. That's why we were very quick to get our application in on Friday.
If we're applying $47,000, and the cap is 100, shoot, we better be the first one they look at.
Well, we'll see. Hopefully, we got our application in.
Well, I think there's $100 million that they're.
John, I can't keep taking questions in the middle of council meetings, sir. I apologize.
My concern originally was when this came to us, and I responded back, I think to you, the mayor, and you, was that we would not know if we were approved or not. We have to spend it, and even though it's a wonderful thing, the City of Utica does not have an extra $47,000 to give away in any way, shape, or form if we were not reimbursed. So as long as we know that, even if we don't get it till November and have to spend it by September, as long as there is a guarantee that says, you will be getting a check for that amount, I don't have an issue with it. If there's a situation where it's iffy, I can't put it on the line. It's, we can take and roll the dice.
Yeah, so when I get, obviously, when I can, when I can release any funds, I do anything debt measure until we have guarantees that there's funds coming in from the federal or state government. So right now, I think Mr. Pat Oster is just seeking or informing us that this can happen, and that we would have to authorize the acceptance of those funds when they come in.
Well, we have to, we have to authorize payment on September 30 as well.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Pat Oster said we'll know well in advance of that.
Do you need that motion today, Phil?
I don't think I need it today.
Okay.
We're gonna get a contract, I would suggest, probably at the September council meeting. We can have it approved then.
For the purposes of brevity, we're gonna move on.
Well, we need to go back to your other ideas.
Water.
Authorizing to enter into that assistance program. Didn't you need a resolution?
If the council wishes to participate in it, then we need a council's motion to opt in.
I move that we opt into the Water Utility Assistance Program.
The board.
It's been moved by Mr. Calendino, supported by Mr. Sylvester. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? Not all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Pat Oster, sir, you, anything further that you have?
So I did want to mention also the payroll reimbursement program, but legal counsel already brought, mentioned that, so I think we can pass on that. And finally, I just wanted to let council know I did put on your table a couple of documents with the proposed sewer and water rates for fiscal year 2021. Unfortunately, I didn't have this ready on Thursday, when the clerk was... Unfortunately, I didn't have this ready on Thursday when the clerk was putting the packets together and then was busy on Friday and today working on these two reimbursement programs. So it may be that we need to table this item until next month, although I would hate to leave it that long. So real quickly...
Is there any changes to what you set out earlier?
No changes to what I sent to you and the mayor on the 22nd of June, no. What I will say is that the ready-to-serv charges are going up in part because of a bond issue that was floated by Oakland McComb Interceptor in 2019 that is impacting us in this fiscal year to the tune of $60,000 in debt service. However, the consumption rates, the water consumption rate is going up by half a percent. No, yes, half a percent, but the sewer rate's going down by eight, almost eight and a half percent. And part of that is because the, even though McComb County wastewater and OMID are issuing debt, it's resulting in lower maintenance costs that are being, therefore reducing the sewer operational costs that we're being charged.
I think if we put this off a month, we just keep putting ourselves through the hole. These are the other numbers we had to look at. Based on what you had said, I had examined that. Same thing too with some cost going up, majority of your bill is sewer and water, or sewer anyway, so that's the biggest decrease. So in the end, I think we're pretty sum zero, if maybe not just a little bit ahead of the game. So I would make a motion to adopt these proposed rates for fiscal year June 30th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, supported by Mayor Dion.
Discussion?
I'm getting there.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Mr. Calendrino would like to discuss something?
So Mr. Panastor, when I'm looking at this, really, the end result would be, just so that the public knows...
Yeah.
That for very low usage or consumers, like, what is it, less than 2,000 gallons per month, they're going to see a very slight increase.
Correct.
But for any consumer that uses 3,000 gallons or more, and I'm only talking about the five-eighths meter at this point, but any consumer that uses 3,000 gallons or more, they see a decrease in their water, in sewer bill. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Then a schleps with the one-inch meter get an increase.
Yeah, it's a little different for you.
Okay.
And so, one last thing too, the OMID bond issue we talked about earlier, that's obviously going to impact next year's rates. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
Nothing further.
Okay, it's been moved by, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Panastor. Nothing further?
Nothing further.
All right. Ms. Ricketts is our city clerk. She's requesting a Michigan Municipal League membership renewal. I don't think there's much to be discussed on the matter. Ms. Ricketts, is there any increase significantly to the membership fees?
No, there's not.
Okay.
$3,011 to the MML dues and then $301 to the legal defense fund. And as you know, MML has served the city for many years very well.
They've been good partners with us. I would like to make a motion to renew the membership of the Michigan Municipal League.
Support.
It's been moved by Dion, supported by, I was saying, Mr. O'Donnell this time.
Kind of a tie, yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell, youth gets the tie. And any further discussion on the matter?
Well, wait a second. Shouldn't it be the older guy because he has less chance of making more motions?
We'll make sure Perry makes some motions on his last day, counsel.
Yeah, I'm spent.
Okay.
So it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the matter? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, motion carries, Ms. Ricketts.
An extra question is the Great Lakes Water Authority industrial pre-treatment program resolution. Basically, we don't have a choice whether or not to adopt this.
They're basically saying we must do it. What was I just reading here? I don't know. They have a pre-treatment program, a surcharge, high-strength program, special discharge in general.
Details not important, comrade clerk.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
Just passed.
Must pass a resolution of their updated rules is what we're doing. We want, if we want water, we have to...
That's basically what this says, yeah.
Basically.
Okay. So council, any questions reference the proposed resolution?
Doesn't matter if you have them. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the Great Lakes Water Authority's industrial pre-treatment program resolution.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, supported by Ms. Terencey. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you, the motion carries.
I'm sorry, I need a roll call vote on that.
I was going to say that. As you were. It's been moved by Mr. Sikora. It's been supported by Ms. Terencey. Ms. Ricketts, we'll take the roll.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
Cuttington?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Dion? Yes. Very good, thank you, ma'am. The motion carries unanimously, a seven. So, sorry, Major, did you realize I did say as you were? It's an Army term. I know a lot of people in the military, Gus, you probably don't know this, but Chuck, what Army guys have realized, Ricky, you were in the Army, weren't you? Were you in the military? So if you were doing something and you made a mistake as the individual running the company and given an order, you would say as you were, which negated anything that previously happened takes you back to the original beginning point. So should you ever hear that, as you were, this means we're going back to the beginning. So a lot of veterans know that, military guys. No Navy jokes, Gus. All right, so thank you very much, everyone. Ms. Ricketts, you have one more?
Yes. I have a request to submit our municipal code supplements to MUNICODE for updates. We haven't done that in over four, five years. I've been putting it off because you see the cost is, well, it was $4,000. So that, what they do is they, they, all of our codes, like this, like the DDA ordinance and the marijuana ordinance and our new sign ordinance, what they do is they review it for any discrepancies or duplications, then they incorporate it into our existing ordinance. So this is a budgeted item, so I am requesting, I did budget $5,000. Their estimate is 3,300, but I haven't sent them over the marijuana and this other one. So I'm going to request not to exceed $4,000 to have MUNICODE update our ordinance.
If it's budgeted, do you even need us?
This is budgeted.
Right, so I don't think you need our approval, do you?
I think it exceeds the...
It exceeds the...
The mayor's office signature.
Oh. I move to authorize you to not exceed $5,000 for the MUNICODE updates.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Calendrino, supported by Ms. Terencey. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Also, MUNICODE puts these, gets these ordinances online for the city to put them in a PDF format so they're searchable. It's a pretty good source to be able to go to.
Excellent source.
Okay, Ms. Ricketts, anything further?
Yeah, I do have one more request. I am requesting that council authorize Linda and Mayor Dion to hire a labor, or an attorney to act as a hearing officer. We have an appeal for the marijuana ordinance and it has to be reviewed for, by a hearing officer. So...
I was going to talk about it, actually, on my portion. I think, so there was an appeal that was filed. It's an internal appeal where we'd have a hearing officer that would review and make recommendations according to the ordinance. I mean, if you want to authorize me up to a certain amount, but I mean, I just reviewed the appeal as of today, so I don't know that it needs to be...
My motion would be to have, to, for council to authorize you and Tom to pick that hearing officer at a cost not to exceed two grand.
You're going to have to do it on an hourly basis.
The one quote I got was $185 an hour. Or 500, or 500 per application, but this is kind of different.
So may I ask you, do we have, the ones that didn't get the approval are the ones that are asking for this hearing or whatever?
One applicant has, has submitted the appeal as of now.
So are you anticipating another one on top of that?
No, the time period's gone, according to the ordinance.
So just the one?
Are you...
So council, any questions reference the request?
So what is Beth asking?
She's asking that myself and, myself, Ms. McGreal and the clerk's office be able to engage in the services of, what was the title? Hearing attorney?
Hearing officer. That we're authorized to appoint a hearing officer. I, I don't know, do we need to put an amount not to exceed the payment? Are you, oh, you suggested an hourly rate?
Yeah, I mean, I have someone in mind. I, I mean, I was anticipating getting some information and probably bringing it to council at the next meeting to approve that hiring.
So do you want to postpone this item?
It's up to you guys. Just puts it off for another 30 days.
Ms. McGreal, you feel confident that you'll be able to do it by the next time council meets?
Yeah, I've already reached out to someone that I think would be a good fit, but they need to run through their conflicts to make sure that they're able to handle it.
I would guess that Ms. McGreal is probably best suited to locate and hire this person or, you know, bring them before us. So I would feel confident, I don't believe we need a motion at this point for Ms. Ricketts' concern, only because we're going to turn it over to the attorney's office. Any concerns, council, any questions, comments?
No. Just the pay. I mean, I'm going to be concerned about that.
Yeah, either way, we're going to have to pay something because it's a asset. But the good thing is we do have the money from the applications that are, that is, you know, appropriate to use for these purposes.
So, I mean, I'm looking at municipal lawyers is, and I would say the going rate for an experienced municipal lawyer is about 138 an hour right now.
Okay.
So that's what I would be anticipating, but, you know, until I actually get that quote or agreement to bring before council, and there's probably not going to be a cap on something like that, but it's just all so preliminary right now because we just got the appeal in last Thursday, Friday, Wednesday?
We could go Monday.
Was it?
We could go today. Yeah.
So is this something that council has to vote on? Or is it something that is part of the structure of the original ordinance that is anticipated and we just let the process go through with a choice?
You're going to have to prove the expenditure, the monetary expenditure, but you don't really have a choice.
We almost all have a choice in the matter. It's part of the, it's, you know, part of the mechanism of the application process if there's a dispute.
I mean, we can do it at the next meeting or any meeting that comes in between that you might be ready to present it, so.
For sure.
Pretty good. Okay, then we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and take no action on the request right now from Ms. Ricketts and we'll let Ms. McGreal go with her suggestions, see what that leads us. All right, Ms. Ricketts, anything else, ma'am?
Um, no, I have nothing else. Still absentee ballots are available for anybody that wants to vote by mail. We're strongly suggesting that with the COVID. Just contact my office.
Okay. I did have a question for Ms. McGreal. The governor's order today came out and most of us got the alert and scared the heck out of us on your smartphone. Gus just got a flip phone, just got away from his flip phone recently. Gus, that loud noise was an alert from the governor's office, okay? I know you got your flippy. I know you separated from your flippy a little while, you got some nerve, you know, you're nervous about it. That noise is from the governor's office. Ms. McGreal, so when the governor orders an executive order like that, does it become law on her word or executive, on the signature of the executive order? I know it's a misdemeanor not to where the, you know, if you're cited, but does that become law or how's it viewed? Because there's some question from some folks that are debating about this issue.
Well, I think there's a big dispute in the legal community about that right now and there's, there's cases pending as to whether or not she has the authority to do that or not.
On its face, though, today, as far as we can tell, it's enforceable as law.
My advice to my clients would be to adhere to the order to the best of your ability until the court of appeals rules differently.
Just as a question, though, part of the executive order says that unless you medically cannot wear a mask.
Or if you're under five.
So somebody comes in here and says medically, I can't wear a mask, and you say, why? And they say, I don't have to tell you because of HIPAA rules. You don't have much of a challenge because you are not entitled to know their medical history. They can just tell you, I have a medical, they could be lying. And then at the other point that they're asking, you're being told that the business, which the City of Utica is a business, if you walk in the lobby, that anybody back there is the one that has to try to enforce the law. But we already know that people have been injured and killed by trying to get people to wear their masks or saying something by the crazies. So are we really smarter? I don't even know what to do anymore. I'm asking it from the city. I've got a situation with my business, okay? There's too many nuts out there, okay? And they're asking us to be the policing agency and we're not policemen.
Correct.
So...
If everyone just practiced a little common courtesy and thought about, you know, what it takes to get along nice in the society, I think everyone would be just fine. You do find some people that want to march to the beat of their own drum and, you know, unfortunately, there's going to be those folks. If everyone just kind of does their part and acts civil and worries about their neighbor like we're supposed to, if we get back to worrying about our neighbors and not just ourselves, then we're going to be in good shape. If you don't like the mask, God bless you, you don't like it, but think about the person next to you that does. So I'm not a big fan of it, but...
The question, oh, and I, neither am I, okay? But the question comes into what is the responsibility of a City of Utica employee to say, I'm sorry, you have to put that mask on?
Or leave.
Yep, yep.
Well, then they don't want to leave.
Then you call the police department, then they'll get him for trespassing. And then they'll issue the ticket.
In the worst case scenario, then we'll close down City Hall again. If we find that we're going to harass the people that are not able to follow the rules, we'll advocate for the safety of our, of our employees and we'll go that route. We still managed, we needed it for that month and a half or whatever it was, and we'll manage again. So if we find that it's not the case, then we'll just close the door to City Hall and we'll do everything remotely again. But right now, if everyone does their part, I think we can all manage to get through this. So, all right, thanks, Linda, for your almost answer. Appreciate that. Is that a $138 answer?
Attorney's answer.
Sometimes I'm sure she's mad at me because I didn't go to the eighth grade dance with her at Epple Junior High.
I don't think she's mad at you. If anything, she's faithful.
She actually did ask me to dance.
You were the last guy.
But we did go to junior high school, A and high school together. She won't talk to me, I was an underclassman, actually quite a few years younger.
One year.
One year. All right, really good. It doesn't have to be true, it'd be funny. So, okay, nothing from the DDA, unfortunately. Parks and Rec, Mrs. Dion, you're on the Parks and Rec. Anything going on at Parks and Rec?
No.
Nothing to report. Historical District Commissioner left the report. City Attorney Linda McGreal, anything?
I was just going to report on the appeal process, so I think we've already covered that here today.
All right, thank you. And bills payable, council presented before you were the bills to pay. We like to pay bills and if there's a motion, go ahead and get them paid as such, that would be great.
So be it.
Removed by Mr. Sikora, supported by Mr. Cuttington. Any discussion on paying the bills? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, let's pay the bills. Motion carries. At this time, we are coming to the conclusion of the meeting. It would invite any persons to come to the podium for a period of three minutes and address council on any one subject that's on their mind. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address council? Again, anyone that would like to address council, now's your opportunity. We'll show that no one's approached council. I'm sorry?
Somebody's like that.
Mr. Brereton?
I didn't want to put a vase in this city. You know, wow. I don't, we didn't, he's got the, the, Mr. Sikora is trying to, all these, you guys are, and I'm joining pathway. All these, you guys are, and I'm annoying pathway.
Okay, Mr. Prusker. Well, Mr. Prusker, we appreciate you being here tonight. We appreciate you being here tonight. And as always, you know, I know you're a longtime Utica resident and it's our honor to have you here before us tonight, so thank you for gracing us this evening.